Follow-up discussion on general fund budget for fiscal year 2024, 2025.
Okay.
Ken, you got to do this?
I am. We're progressing, so we're getting closer to the end. We'll cover utility fund tonight. Then we'll do a little follow-up in some of the questions, comments we got back on supplemental. Follow-up to that. And then I'll just do a brief explanation text rule, just actually on the agenda tonight. So with that, we'll start with the current year and kind of where we're at. Actually, we're doing pretty, pretty well this year considering. Our water sales are coming out to be pretty close to what we had anticipated. It's been well under budget up through about June, July kind of was strong. And appears that we're still doing well in August, so I think it'll end strong. That was kind of like last year where it was kind of the same thing. In fact, our projections were about 300,000 less than that. So with that, you see, you know, our target is somewhere around 90 days is where we always shoot for. So so we ended up way stronger than what we thought. So that carried over into this year. This year is coming in close to normal, kind of what we expect. This could actually be a little bit more given the next few months. It's always tough doing utility fund budget first part of August because we have our two biggest months that we don't know what they're going to be yet. So sewer sales, they're just a little bit under what our projections are. They're largely affected, you know, we update the winter average every year. So come about May, if those change a good bit, that can have a overall effect because it kind of sets a cap through the summer months for sewer costs. So it's a little bit of difficulty. Kind of depends, even though they're geared to where it just shows inside usage to determine your average. There's people who water during the winter months. And so when it's winter and when it's dry in the winter, those will tend to be higher and vice versa when it's wet in the winter. So it was very bad. If they're still fairly consistent, so we're looking pretty good there. Operations were actually a good bit under what we anticipated budget-wise.
Can we go back? What are other fees and charges to sound like you have?
Cut-off fees, NSF charges, super tap fees, water tap fees, I mean smaller. Then on our expenditures, the mostly because of projects that are getting pushed off to next year. So we had, you know, rehab project for oil pushed out to 2025, lift station maintenance. Some of our SCADA equipment, is that what that is? MCC, motor control centers. And so Scott usually has, and their budgets staggered out, you know, different lift stations or different well lots each year. And and so those, you have to adapt according to what's going on, availability and all that. So these often get pushed out to the next year or want to get moved up. But so there's a couple of those moved out. So it's not like we're saving money, we're just delaying the expense next year. So in the upper Trinity, we kind of got offsetting charges this year. Water volume is down in what we anticipated budget-wise. And especially now during the summer months, we're using more of our well, well water. So that should be pretty consistent through the rest of the year. So that, or sewer fluid is really what was an unusual impact. I mean, because of the increased rain we had in the spring, the flooding we had, it got into our, through our manholes and and so our costs. And you'll see a little bit more detail of what that cost was. But it was 800,000, it's what we're, well, close to 900,000 is what we're projecting on that. So that's quite a, quite a big jump when we have that. So it's a challenge, you know, we've been through this. You know, every so many years when we have flooding, we try to have everything sealed and do the best we can. And there's a constant process every so many years. We do smoke testing and go through, but it's a continuing process. And when it floods, we find new ones. So so then our sewer line, we expected 175,000 that the upper Trinity said that they were going to charge us doing some work. I believe it was lift station one, so I plugged that in the budget. But it appears that we're not going to proceed with that. And so that's good for us. And there's a couple of projects, when they said they were going to do in their absorbent fund balance, lift station one, when Scott told them our plans were that we're going to build our own lift station and kind of take it away from them in the next few years, they determined that, okay, we don't need to spend that money. So so that's our benefit as well. So bottom line is we're going to stay close to where we were last year. So very, very solid shape, very good ports. So going into next year, again, we'll start with water sales. And so when I, you know, I have a model that I developed and it's basically kind of using, it's like a four-year cycle of, you know, using percentages from the last several years in different rate categories and in basically normalizing that, those sales based on anticipated usage. So it kind of sets an average there. But so if we have a real dry year, it's going to be above, real wet year below. And there's no way to really anticipate that. But but this will capture trends over time. So over time that our water sales have been less and maybe years past. But there's kind of a floor to that as well. But so 6.1 based on our accounts and the recent usage history and all that and some wet and dry years and that is what we expect. So you can see from the graph here, it's kind of follows the trend there. And this can be a little bit affected by, we did increase our wholesale rate a little bit this last year. So that's reflected in that number. Sewer sales, again, more static and you can see that that's followed that way pretty well. So, you know, using the same methodology for that. Going down to looking at our operations costs, you know, some of these are moved over from last year. So, you know, actually the change, well, in terms of comparing budget to budget to budget, we have engineering increase 100,000 for a few projects. Motor control center for various lift stations, 70,000. That's, this is the engineering side of it. There will be the miniature side in a different line item. But sanitary sewer overflow, we do this periodically.
That's the smoke testing.
Okay. And so over five years, so it would be 20% of that each year. Water storage tank, this is a change that we're initiating for this year. Water tank paintings are incredibly expensive. Most of them are about half a million dollars. And and so we've kind of handled that on our capital side, even though it's not a capital project. But it's using bond monies for that typically. But it's really an operational cost. And since we, the number of them we have, and it's like every seven years we have to do that, we really need to build that into our rate structure. So this is, this year starting out, this one's not quite as much, you know, it's 350. But so we put that in there and you'll see no multi-year projections. I'll have that, we have a space that where we try to do one per year. And we'll have a off-year here and there, but that's just kind of the cost of doing business with that. So that's increased.
What is the engineering for Lake Vista? What is that for? You've got a $250,000 painting for the tank, but you've got engineering for Lake Vista as well at 25,000, just above, right there.
Oh.
Engineering.
Engineering for the painting? Is it consistent on all or is that just a?
Engineering is roughly 10% of your construction cost.
But you don't have it for the other, the other tank?
Right. And the Oak Street tank, since our engineers have been with us for 30 years, they tend to throw in a little pro bono here and there.
Okay, so.
So we're kind of getting a little.
This year, the 25 reflects engineering for both essentially. Okay.
You can use same plan sheets.
Yeah, just put a different name on it. Okay. Thank you.
Then the water line maintenance, we are buying an expensive camera. Actually, we've not had, have we had this kind of camera to send you?
We have wastewater cameras. This is a water, potable water camera, DCQ, chapter 290 mandates, a valve maintenance program. And in our valve maintenance program, the very first thing, you have to locate all your valves. We've got various valves here and there in the city. We've spent years locating them. And now we have suspect valves that are under paving, you know, over the years, from back from the 70s and the 80s. So this will allow us to utilize fire in an existing live fire hydrant. Take it off, you install the camera, you re-energize the line and you get to televise a potable water line and not do a service interruption for hours and hours. Or you dig down to the line, you cut it, open it up and camera it that way and you're interrupting service for hours.
Generally recommended too, you don't use the wastewater camera.
You couldn't put enough bleach on a wastewater camera.
So, oh, actually. So so that's really the big change from last year for on the operation side. Looking at our upper Trinity cost or wholesale cost, upper Trinity represents about 50% of our utility costs. So it is a big deal. And that's why we have the pass-through rates associated on your bill to basically offset that. But generally, there's two, you know, there's water, there's a demand charge and a volume charge. Likewise with sewer, there's a demand and volume. And we'll look into, just to get a feel for that, we'll look at each one. The water costs, you know, are, you can see a little history here of our rates per thousand gallons. And it's $1.9 and up to $1.56. So it's, last few years have increased a good little bit with that. So and you can see associated volume that we've encountered or paying for with that. So there is an escalating cost there. So where we, if that's going to be continuous, when we look at our multi-year, you know, we kind of make some assumptions. And so it kind of depends. I really don't know what to expect, but sure costs are not going to go down.
The $1.56, is that their published rate for for next year?
That's what we received their preliminary, they haven't finalized their budget yet, but that's like.
But that information is from them to this point?
Yes.
That's, I mean, that's a 50, almost a 50% increase in five or six years. What is there, I mean, what are they doing, lining the plant with gold? Like, what are they doing?
Well, part is based on what the city of Dallas charges them.
That's right.
So that's what initiates.
Yep.
It's mostly wholesale water rate from the city of Dallas.
Never mind, I forgot Dallas is involved.
So so, you know, in years past, they really made an effort trying to keep that level. But, you know, in last few years, that's really kind of been changed. But not everything's fallen that same trajectory. So here's the demand side of this. And so so roughly, we're paying, you know, $500,000 per MGD. So we have a subscription for three MGD, three millions a gallon per day that we pay for whether we take a gallon or we take all three million gallons a day, we pay the same thing. So our rate structure is we base load off the upper Trinity and and use that throughout the year. And then we, but since this is a demand charge, we have to ensure that we have sufficient capacity on our heaviest usage day of the year, which would be July, August, somewhere in there. And if we were, if we didn't have our well water, that would be quite a big problem. So we save a lot by doing that. And we, we really, this was, this was initiated back in the 90s. And that probably will be sufficient for build-out. So we did pretty good with that.
They tried to make us give up the water and Holland Village lot.
Right, right.
And Holland Village said, nope, not today.
So that definitely has worked to our advantage. So these costs have increased as well, but so you can see the trajectory here. And then for our sewer affluent, you know, I mentioned this year, you see the big spike. Again, our rates have increased in 2023, it jumped up a good bit and it's marginally increased since then. So that's, you can see a big trend there. This is aberration. And then on our, we also, instead of a demand charge for sewer, we have two components. One M charge and a facilities capital charge. Since this is a plant that services different jurisdictions, basically it's a pro-rata cost for maintaining that, basically that gets passed on. But we've actually, it's a good thing, we've seen a little bit of a moderation of that. So we actually started decreasing the last couple of years. So that's helped offset some of the increase on the other side. And then finally, we have, you know, for basically our lift station one, then our sewer line over to across the lake to upper Trinity, and we pay for that. This mostly represents the, the debt cost that what they borrowed to construct that way back when they paid for. So that's pretty, remained pretty level. Every so often when we have repairs that are associated with like lift station one or that, we get charged directly for that. So we see like a little spike here, but that's been pretty consistent. So looking at our wholesale, we basically, again, I mentioned that we treat that as a pass-through. So we have our water sales and we also have costs with that. So looking at, you know, this next year and going forward, just based on a guess of where rates are going to go, you'd see currently we have, we're actually pretty good that we're pretty close to a full recovery of that. Well, actually a little bit above perhaps. But it's, it's offset, I mean, we, it's offset a little bit. We're water, we're under collecting sewer, we're over collecting. So this is based on our current rates that we have an effect over here. So we'll probably look at doing this, you know, and we true this up usually in November when we have the full year data from upper Trinity. And we'll look to probably increase the water demand and as well as the volume. Actually, lower sewer to true that up. So if we do it right, it would be hardly any effect on, I mean, individual. It kind of depends on people's usage a little bit, but it should be basically an offset. But looking forward, again, based on our projections, we would look to have a few adjustments over the next few years. But still, it's kept pretty, you know, we haven't had a lot of adjustments. And this could be less if their increased trajectory ends up being a little bit less too. So but again, these are done just to do cost recovery. In total, we're probably a little bit behind in what we collect and what we spend. But, you know, we kind of look at it over time. This was set up to true it up exactly every year as best we could. And people don't really like having the rates change, so we kind of do it to where, okay, we'll do it every few years and just kind of keep up with that right now in our process. So this would be likely November-ish that we will do a final calculation and we'll notify you all what's coming with that. So looking at next year, you know, we looked at revenues expenditures. We also have a few things of, we have a general fund overhead basically. And it's common practice for enterprise funds in cities to provide, transfer to the general fund for this overhead support, you know, HR, data processing. We do all our enterprise for police vehicles through the general, general fund. So city of Boston got in trouble some years back for really, with their electric company where they made a lot of money there and they subsidized their general fund a good bit and they really got called out for that. So so this is scrutinized a little bit more and there's different ways to approach that. We've been very conservative with it because in the end, I mean, either our same residents were paying either utility fees or they're paying. So so we just want to keep it where we emulate just a good business practice for the most part. So 470 is what we've had this app for a good while and I don't really see a need. We could certainly justify a lot more that we could transfer, but that would basically prompt higher utility rates to accommodate that. And so it's just, again, a little bit of a balancing act. And at some point in time, we may adjust that, but I don't really see a need at this point in time to do so. And on the impact fees, and this, you know, this, this shows our, you know, basically our balances, our balances were about 1.1 million. So we've collected these fees over the years and basically impact fees are charged by developers to, for new lots. And it's to offset the impact of growth, basically. So current residents don't have to pay for new development for infrastructure. And so since we issued debt for a lot of the improvements and all that, we kind of use that. We've justified basically the use of all this money. We just arbitrarily allocate a certain amount to offset debt service over, over time. This used to be actually 300,000, but as our balances are decreasing, you know, we reduce that some. At some point in time, that's going to run out. But that's what that 150 is, is somewhat offset or partially offset our debt service. So the bottom line is that we are still looking in really good shape for next year. So that's through, through next year. So let's take a look forward. We got a, you know, we talked about the pass-through, you know, here, that's what those numbers, it's kind of a cumulative effect. You know, if we adjust our rates here, then that, that number would be included, that would reduce this number and so forth. So those increases I showed you before would generate this kind of revenue to basically cover our wholesale cost. But one of the changes we're going to have looking forward is likely a $10 million issue in 2025. That Scott's got a number of projects slated for that. And so that would give us debt service in the kind of this range, 300 to 5 to 6 hundred thousand dollars. So when we add that along with our tank painting, we've added a good bit of annual cost to that. So what that's going to take is likely in 2026, a rate adjustment, which would be what I've shown right there, somewhere in the 600,000 range to cover those increased costs. And generally, we've, what was it, 2017, I think was our last rate increase as far as our city rates. So that'd be nine years and I think 2017 was 10 years removed from the last time we did it. So we've done, done pretty good to be every 10 years or so to adjust our city rates. You know, by contrast, Atmos will be on the agenda tonight and they do it theirs every year, so.
That's 11 bucks a household a month?
So there's a couple of different ways, you know, we'll consider that when we get there. But we can increase the base amount, so it represents about $10 a month on that. Or we can split between the base and our volume rate. Since it's kind of a fixed cost mostly, it would be great if we could do that in a base, but we have to be sensitive to our lower users or, you know, receiving folks and all that. So we always look at that as a trade-off of how we balance that out. What we've tried to avoid is what we did in years past is having a graduated rate schedule. So we cover a lot of revenues for people that just watered a lot in the summer. And when we have a wet year, we would really fall way short and so it made a lot more volatile. So with that, I mean, through 2025, we should be good. If we do that in 26, it would keep us right about our target over the five years. So that's our best guess at this point in time. A lot of things can change with that, but that's kind of what we anticipate with that. So that covers our utility, any questions with the utility fund?
Okay.
So this, we're going to address some of our follow-up comments, questions, or you can ask questions, anything. We just don't want to have a narrow conversation on trics this time, so. So we have to keep that a little shorter. So with that, I'll put Mark in the spot of, you know, the really comment we got was that, what is it? We need three. So Mark will just address it.
Sure. You do chief. I know Chief Ryan talked to General last month about this. This is the police department's only supplemental request of the year. Currently, we have two of the trics and this is going to add a third one. And the advantage to have the extra one is we have some department master trainers now. And to train somebody on it, it takes at least a 12-hour course. And there's some experience you have to gain riding it too, because it is a three-wheel vehicle. So there's some skills required to it. Having an extra one, we can train two officers at the same time along with instructor rather than just one-on-one. So it'll help out in that. Plus, our usage of these vehicles, of course, at the schools, so we have two. So Corporal Harney and Officer McKelvey will have access to one. And we also want to have one available for the trails for the officers and also for using the shops. So that's the primary reason we.
So correct me if I'm wrong, because I thought it was if one breaks down and we have to send one to the shop, then we have another one to use. I think that.
It would, it would help with that too. Obviously, if we had one break down, we'd still have two to use.
So are they, do they have to go to a shop to be repaired? Or is there somebody around, like our maintenance department could fix them or?
For the most part, we can fix most things. We've had, three of our officers went to the trike maintenance course. It was a three-day course where they learned how to take these things apart. And a good thing about them is they're modular. So I was talking with Sergeant Burgis, he went to the school. And he said, they can do almost everything maintenance-wise on it. They have to order the parts, but they can change out a tire, they can do the brakes. These are the common things that need maintenance on it. So he said they can do almost everything on it unless there's a catastrophic failure of the motor or something. But all the common maintenance items that typically are seen, they're fully qualified to do. And he said the greatest part of it is being, all the parts are modularized so they can, they just ship a part and they're just basically part changers.
So are they kept at the school and then officers there use them or no?
No, not necessarily. We can, you know, since it's brand new, of course, we haven't fully developed our model yet or the. Talking to Corporal Harney, they have the ability to actually be driven inside the school. And but we're going to, now the school is started, they're going to play a big role in our enforcement of the micro-mobility ordinance with the scooters out there. It's a great way to interact with the kids because the kids are very interested in it and all that. We've kind of gone through this summer with our education phase for the micro-mobility ordinance, where we've been giving a lot of warnings and doing the kid coupons and stuff. And now that school started, we're going to be going into a little more enforcement now. So if you've gotten a warning, you might get a citation next time.
Are you still speaking of that, going to do training for homeschool, private school, public school kids?
Yes, in fact, we have on our website for the micro-mobility. If you pull up that webpage for micro-mobility, it has on there, we're not going to, it says on there to contact Corporal Harney or Officer McKelvey if you're a homeschool. And then we will come to you and give a class on request. So it's on request, not something you set up.
Okay.
That's our current webpage currently that's on there.
Okay. Councilors, may I ask any questions?
Okay. Three projects. I think this kind of shows, you know, question mark that we have consensus that it's not something we want to fund now, but consider likely in our next bond issue. That fair statement? Is that a fair statement?
Okay. Scott was looking for certainty there, so.
I won't put it in next year.
Did anybody have any questions or comments about that?
So with this, I'll pass the time to Phil.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, let's go ahead and get started. At least vehicle for the deputy director, and it wasn't in the presentation. So we had a new restroom cleaning program, Mayor, you remember that, was created seven years ago in response to the community's complaints about cleanliness of our park restrooms. So we shifted work, task and staffs to address this. This included dedicating one staff member to cleaning restrooms, which changed from a mowing crew task to a trained dedicated staff member responsible for all the restrooms in the park system. The new program required a truck for a dedicated staff member. So the deputy director gave up his truck and shared a vehicle with recreation coordinator. However, this arrangement is providing to be a significant challenge due to the overlapping uses, the increase in program and also projects. So we're requesting that council consider adding a truck for the deputy director. So that's, that's the justification for the truck. Is there any questions about that?
How much?
13,000, I think, was in the, was on previous.
Yeah.
13,800.
Okay.
That's, that's a, the lease cost per year. Any questions?
Can we just give him a trike?
One night cost.
I like the way you paint.
We only pay that one year, and it's good for a couple at least. We could badge it or, you know, craft it.
And then they get little carts to you behind it?
Or electric vehicle, if I see him at Lowe's, I would recall.
An ATV, one of those, yeah.
So you need park pickleball. Replace the four-foot fence with the eight-foot. This was in the quote, so we are replacing the four-foot, it's all going to be eight-foot, at the, at the price that was provided.
I think the comment was to just do that.
To what?
Replacing the current four-foot with eight fence, eight-foot fencing, and that, that's, there's sections that are four feet tall when you first enter. Well, it's all going to be eight-foot tall, it's going to have gates on it, it's going to have windscreen.
And is that, the price include the windscreen then?
Would you have other, like, fencing replacement and all that as part of that cost too, I think?
Right, it's, it's, it's all of the fencing, all the fabric.
And the question was, is do we need to replace all of it? Because I hear with this end of useful life on chain link, that's a foreign concept to me.
Right, so the, the, the current fencing had, it's curling up. You know, we're, we're keeping the post in place, and we're only replacing what is damaged or needs to be replaced. That's what the 65,000 dollars is for. It's the same thing that we did at Highland Village Tennis Center. We replaced only the, only the fabric and, and horizontal post and things of that nature.
So the 65,000 includes the four-foot to eight-foot?
Yes.
And I thought the question was, just of that 65,000, how much of that is replacing just the four-foot with the eight-foot and doing nothing else? Is that correct?
Right. Oh, I, I'm sorry, I missed the question completely, but substantially less, for sure. I can come back with that, I can send out an email with that cost. Is that, is that what you would like?
Well, I mean, we're, we're looking at dollars and cents. Maybe you push it off, but.
So replacing just the four-foot, not the eight-foot, but re- replacing the four-foot and adding windmills?
Windscreen.
Windscreen all the way.
All the way around and gates.
Are any of the areas safety concerned, or are they just aesthetic, or maybe both?
It's not a safety concern, it's aesthetic and just, you know, getting at the end of a useful life. So I can.
That's, that's the question.
I'll get the quote for that.
If it's meaningful, because then you just do it, and you'll come back next year or two years and say we need to do it all, but.
Right. Okay. So I'll go back and get a quote just for the four-foot area and the windscreen alone. I apologize for missing that question. Mini excavator, so how many park projects require this type of equipment in the last year? We do not record the type of equipment used to the job task, but it's our most frequently used piece of equipment after the mowers, which is deployed about approximately once a week. And then how many days were incurred due to a lack of equipment? None at this time. With our scheduling system, is it possible to share capital equipment between parks and recreation? It'd be very challenging due to both departments' demands. The fact that public work, public works would take priority over parks due to the nature of their tasks. So we would expect a backlog of tasks, with tasks awaiting, with parks awaiting usage. So what is the use, use for and how often? It's used for irrigation, domestic waterline repairs, landscape renovation projects, tree planting, grading, demoing and installing new side fixtures. The requests for a park, Mini X is no longer needed because the utility department has a budget to replace their excavator, and we're going to take their excavator that they have, which is, you know, much better than the one we currently have. Any questions about that?
We kind of saw that as an opportunity where Scott had one.
So you're taking this out of the budget?
Yes.
Okay, well, thanks for answering the question.
It's about two years out for replacement, but we're going to move that up to, to this year. Since that's out of the utility, it's a separate funding source. And then that has some useful life remaining on it for parks that they could use it for a good while. So I think that was, actually ended up being a good solution that will give us long-term savings.
So robotic mower, how many people does it take and how long do employees are needed to mow and trim the dog park, which takes approximately two labor hours? This does not include preventative maintenance on the equipment. And also, we've had three incidents which created, which the current zero-turn mower has slid down the hill and caused some damage to fencing due to its weight and the damp conditions. It doesn't take very much water to make that slope slick, because it's at a, it's a pretty steep angle. So this is a pilot program that if successful, we intend to expand to double tree and unity parks. And doing this will help us gain maintenance labor hours that will be redirected for agriculture and beautification projects throughout the park system. So is there any questions on this?
Is this robotic mower going to be used on the entire dog park, or the small dog park? Or is it both, it's going to be all of it?
Both. Both. Yes.
My concern is the topo and the waist for a pilot project.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's a, a pilot project, you're, you're getting like the hardest thing for it to pilot on, like, and, and, and dealing with literally a mower that will run through poo every day.
So we, well, it's, it's not mowed every day, but we.
Well, I mean, when it's used.
Yeah, so we demoed it and had them actually come out and run it up those hills, or the hill, and it did fine. And then our dog park, as far as cleanliness, we have a service that comes out and picks up the poo. It's treated, because it's so small, it's treated like an athletic field. It's a very high-end dog park, you know, we overseed it to try to maintain grass on it. It's not, you know, anywhere near like flower mounds or, or Louisville's where they're, they're large, they're open. Ours is much smaller, so we have to, we have to maintain it differently. So it's maintained at a higher level. Recreation for the part-time position, so who's, who does this now? There's three staff members, one full-time admin assistant, one recreation coordinator, and one recreation manager that fulfill these duties right now, especially when folks are in and out of the office. Either, you know, the administrative assistant is either on vacation, or she's running up here doing closeouts or other things like that. The other two positions take, take, take responsibility for her duties. In addition to that, senior programming, if she's got someone at the, at the counter, and she's trying to do reservations or senior programming, that means someone from the office staff has to deal with the other customer, make sure we're providing customer services, service. So we could have anywhere from two to three folks at the counter at one time, needing help with various things, you know, from asking questions to wanting to pay for tennis lessons or other lessons, to senior programming questions, to new individuals that are wanting to sign up, to someone that wants a park pass, someone wanting to make a reservation in one of our facilities. There's a, there's a lot that goes on there at that front counter. So this would help tremendously.
And what's the cost on that estimated? I don't remember.
Just go back, I think nine thousand, somewhere close to that? Let's go back pretty far.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Oops.
There you go.
Yeah.
Sunny path.
It's under two.
No, white.
That's the bottom.
That's the cleaning.
That's the bottom.
The bottom, not the end.
And you said what, what was going to come from, from the works over the park?
Mini excavators, so that 70,000.
Seventy.
That's going to go away.
Oh, so we're not, we don't need that?
Right.
Oh, okay. Okay, all right, thank you.
And apologize again about the question about the fencing. I'll make sure that I can get that out to you in a timely manner.
Is that 50,000 for the ballfield groomer? Was that, was that, that was, is that the adjusted price or the original price? I can't remember, because we, we had an email saying that, that cost was going to be cut in half because of some piece of equipment that we had or that we were getting or that we already planned on. The.
The ballfield groomer?
Yeah, the ballfield groomer.
No, that wasn't for me.
Okay.
There was, I, what you maybe remember, I provided clarification on, we have a piece of equipment now that we're replacing, this is an upgrade from it. So the incremental cost is quite a bit less than that, but that reflects the full cost.
What's the lifespan on the groomer? I just don't like that word groomer, but what's the lifespan on that?
I would say anywhere from seven to 15 years, just depending on usage and maintenance.
Okay.
Okay.
So. Give you a little bit of math tonight. Your buddy enjoys his, the revenue cap and the calculations for rates. And so I'm going to show you a little bit of time over and over, and it's, you know, it like, it took a while for it to sink in on me, so I'm hoping the same will happen, because it's confusing. But we're at this year, you know, basically, our tax rate, you know, as I've talked about, is, is split between O and M and, and our debt service. So our current tax rate is 0.501394. So our current year we're operating in. So last year, we had a 3.17 billion taxable value overall. We have the tax levy of 15 million dollars. Okay, going into this year, well, and to show you too, a history of that for three years, and going back, it's been in the 56 range for probably about 20 years, and we've pretty well maintained it. So when we implemented the new legislature, implemented the revenue caps, that kind of forced us to start changing, and our valuation has had some big jumps in the last several years. So, so the two coincided, 2023 was reduced to 54, then last year to 0.501394. And then this year, we're going to see just a slight decrease from that. Again, these reflect our voter-approved rate, and so that is basically based on the three-and-a-half percent cap. So even though our valuations have been considerably more, you know, last year was over 10%. It's still reduced because of that three-and-a-half percent cap, and I'll show you that calculation again. That basically compensates by lowering our tax rate. So for this year, our taxable value is 3.37, and so it's a 5.9 increase overall. Embedded in that amount, included in that amount is new growth of just under $20 billion. So actually, that was a little bit of a surprise that we. Years past, we could bank on 40 million a year, that was the norm. And then in recent years, that's, you know, decreased quite a bit. It's been more in the eight to 10 million dollar range. And I think after this year, it's going to even pretty much down to nothing, because we don't have anything that works for new growth for the most part. So our adjusted tax rule, you know, basically, the total tax rule net of the new growth would be 3.3 million. So that comes into play with our, some of our calculations. First thing we calculate is our no-new revenue rate. So these are all required by the state. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice here. So basically, this is what it is, what is the rate that we would have that would give us absolutely flat, no new increase in tax dollars from residents at all. And so simple calculation is last year's tax levy divided by the new adjusted tax rule, because it does give you ability to capture the new growth in addition to that. But, but for all the existing growth, this would give you, in theory, the same exact dollars you got from last year, based on. So it reduces the tax rate to compensate for the increased value. So that value increased, so your rate would have to go down and give you this same tax levy. And so that's what that represents. So it would be essentially that plus the value of the new growth. So the voter-approved rate, this is where the three-and-a-half percent comes in. So three-and-a-half percent only applies to the O and M part of it. The debt part is calculated separately. So when we look at the calculation, so basically, you're looking at last year's O and M rate times the final, you know, this is our taxable value at the first part of the year, and then there's adjustments made, there's protests, there's other things that happen, and, and some other adjustments. So in essence, it's, it's going to be the O and M dollars from last year divided by the current year adjusted tax rule. And that gives you this rate, and then you multiply that times, add the three-and-a-half percent. And so that becomes the voter-approved O and M tax rate. So that's three-and-a-half that's applied to this portion right here. The debt, you're looking at just the 2.5 million is what we have for this year, divided by our full, actually, I got the number wrong. It's a, it's a full taxable value, so that would be, that's the wrong number there. This is right, but that's, but this also adds inter-tax note. We're actually going to show, do that, that'll be at the next council meeting, and you'll see that. And then that's when we plan to issue that. Again, that's paying for our big capital equipment for over a seven-year period. And so since that debt service will be next year, that's added in, and so that's reflected there. So as long as what that comes down to is our voter-approved rate will be 0.50273. So slight decrease, and that rate, given that we're, increases are going to be less, that rate probably should hold for a while over the next several years. But the action you take tonight, basically, you're going to establish a maximum proposed rate. So you're going, the briefing shows that this is our recommended rate, and that's what you would put out there. And then basically saying that this is the rate we're considering. You can, you could actually choose to adopt a lower rate, but you can't increase it from that. But this is where it comes from. So I hope that makes a little bit of sense.
So we can go below that number, we can't go above.
Not an election.
Well, it'd be too late for an election now, so.
Well, yeah, but.
But, yep, you will be limited by that. So that's what I got for tonight.
That's clear as mud.
That's what happens with politicians, right? Tax policy.
Well, the worksheet's a whole lot worse than that. I, I, that's the simplified version, if you're not. I, I, that's the simplified version, if you're not.
And that's all the agenda tonight.
Actually, one more thing, one more slide. So looking forward, um, again, um, next, we'll, we'll kind of do just a preview of what we have, our final budget amount for general fund and all that. And inclusive of all the changes and other things we've, I've talked about. And then we'll set the public hearing for September tenth, um, city manager recommended budget, we'll have a public hearing. As well as the first read, you know, state law dictates we have to have a second. Well, we have to pass, approve the tax rate within, um, a week after, ten days after our public hearing. So we would schedule it for the next week. We could do it for a, a day before, a day after, but it has to be within that ten days. And then, um, that's when we would do our second reading. Typically, for this second meeting, we've scheduled just a quick early morning meeting, eight thirty or so. So would that be, um, just, um, get everybody on the same page with expectations? Would that be doable for everybody?
Is that Tuesday morning?
That's what we're planning on if that's, if that works for everybody.
John, will you be here? Because I will not be here. Not now.
The, uh, the earlier the better. Eight thirty, seven thirty.
Let's say seven.
Come on, it's two six, I don't care, but I think Angie's gonna say eight thirty.
I'll be here whenever you need. Does eight thirty work for everybody?
Anytime's fine with me.
Sooner the better.
Because it has to be posted and.
Earlier the better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll take, I'm with, I'm Kevin, I'll take as early as you'll, as you'll take us.
Does eight thirty work for you, Mayor?
It doesn't matter to me, I'm in Cabo.
Oh, yes.
I don't care.
What do you do at eight thirty?
I don't care when you, when you have it, actually. To talk to Angie about what time. Ask John, he'll be running. All right, Ken, thank you. Does anybody have any questions about any of that? I love the, uh, all the calculations on. Does anybody have any questions or clarification on to-do items? Number nineteen. That declaration of, uh, Sweeper King for the storm stuff, number nineteen. We could move to consent if that's what, if, if we guys wanted to, I just want to bring that out there.
It's gotta get done, right?
They're just pay bills.
Yeah.
Well, we, they've already been paid. This is just acknowledgement that, that, um, it was, uh, basically a housekeeping measure that we didn't go through the bidding process because it was over that threshold, but it was for an emergency type situation, storm cleanup.
I'm in favor of doing it.
I'm okay with moving it. So I would ask, can we get their notes about when I read consent, their D and W, so if somebody wants to recommend that, then we can move that. If you can see it, and then, anybody else have any other questions about anything else on there?
But there is technical difficulty with our broadcast, just to let you know.
Mm-hmm.
There's technical difficulty with our meeting being broadcast.
Oh.
Yes, early work session, we were, we've lost the signal.
Okay.
Into the, but the regular session will be televised.
Okay.
Apparently, a lot of people inside won't be watching.
Um, all right, nothing else, anybody?
Good evening. Welcome to the Highland Village City Council meeting. Today is August thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, and it is seven thirty P M. We are gonna call the meeting to order, let the record show all council members are present. And Mayor Pro Tim Kixmiller is gonna lead us in prayer and the pledges.
Okay, let us pray. Heavenly Father, we gather here today in a spirit of service and dedication to our community. We ask for your guidance as we undertake the responsibilities entrusted to us. Grant us wisdom to make the decisions that promote justice, fairness, and the well-being of all residents. Help us to listen with open hearts and minds, respecting the diverse voices and perspectives that our city makes us strong. May we work together in harmony, setting aside personal interests for the greater good. Be with our first responders, our police officers, firefighters, paramedics, and all those who put themselves in harm's way to protect us. We ask for your protection over them as they face dangers and challenges each day. Grant them strength, courage, and the support they need to carry out their duties with integrity and compassion. Guide our discussions with fairness and clarity, and help us to always seek the common good in our work. May your peace and wisdom rest upon this council, our city, and all those who call it home. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Okay, so, um, before we get started, I do want to let everyone know that we had tech, technical difficulties during early work session. Uh, but the meeting was recorded and it will be uploaded on demand if, for anybody that wants to, to watch that, so, thank you. Uh, we're gonna move on to mayor and council reports of community interest. Does anyone have anything that they would like to, uh, to bring up?
Yes, school started, so everybody watch out for all the little ones, crosswalks, uh, school zones and all that stuff. So the next couple of weeks, so everybody just pack some patience and, uh, watch out for the little guys.
Absolutely, yes. Anybody else? Okay, well, we're gonna move on to city manager and staff reports.
Mayor, I believe we have a video, Lori and Andrew.
My name is Pat Smith. I am the chair of Serve Louisville. And I'm also the C E O of Serve Denton. So the concept of Serve Louisville is to create what is often referred to as a community shared space.
My name is Kristen Gramling. I'm the operations director here at Serve Louisville. I handle the day-to-day operations of our partner agencies, as well as the staff that we have on site. Some of the onsite partners that we do have are Boys and Girls Clubs of Greater Terrant County.
I'm the regional vice president for Denton County for the Boys and Girls Clubs of Terrant County. So the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Terrant County has been around for ninety-seven years, and we've been providing services to young people through after-school programs, through summer camps, and activities that just build good character and leadership within young people. What Serve Louisville has been for us has really been a hub for us to provide services across the county. This becomes that hub. This is where our, our staff have a place to office, to prepare for the day, and then really to hold our meetings. And to be a, a presence here in this community, in a, in a place where other agencies and folks know where to find us, and, uh, and we know where to find them.
So the benefits of coming to a shared space like this are, one, you don't have to worry about the bathrooms, the kitchen, the copier. Uh, you, we take care of all those things for them. But more importantly, they get to start working with other agencies, and we see that happen all the time.
Our rates and fees are below market rate. Um, so if they were to go out to a commercial space, they would be paying much higher than what we provide here. And that's what a lot of our fundraising, um, comes into play, where we are able to subsidize their, their rent and membership fees to co-locate. So we, we do have promotional efforts, um, that we put towards our, our agencies. We'll promote their programs and services, we'll promote their job opportunities, and we also promote their volunteer opportunities. So we ask for them to send those to us, we'll host it on our website, and we'll also do some social media, um, efforts behind it.
As we look to our next phase of how we're gonna serve in this community, um, one of the, the biggest, uh, opportunities we have is the, the new market pantry that we will operate here out of Serve Louisville. Uh, we expect a full launch of the pantry this, later this summer, and, um, we expect to be able to serve residents in this community.
Our website is servelewisville.org. We're also on LinkedIn, Facebook, and Instagram. If you're an agency that's interested in space, we do have an interest form on our website. Contact us, phone or email, and we'd be happy to schedule a tour with you.
So I want to just share the reason that we, we shared that is the Louisville Chamber of Commerce, Flowerman Chamber of Commerce, and the Highland Village Business Association. Every year has a unity in communities where we recognize, give the nonprofits in the area an opportunity to come out all at the same time. And then there, there's three of them that are, are chosen, I don't even know how, but, um, and then one is, uh, awarded the nonprofit of the year. So Serve Louisville was, uh, the nonprofit of the year. The other two were, um, Heart of the City and Winning the Fight, were the other, so the three that were, the, the three. I also want to say that, um, our staff, um, here at Louisville are the ones that do the interviews and these videos, and they do a fabulous job. So just kind of wanted to explain to everybody why, why we were showing that. So, um, anyway, we're gonna move on to visitor comments. Anyone wanting to address the city council must complete a visitor request. I'm not gonna read that whole thing. Just know that we can't comment. Oh, I didn't know if she's bringing me something. We, we can't comment, so just please understand that that's, Texas Open Meetings Act is the one that says that we, we can't, we can't comment. Um, I do have two that want to speak during visitor, uh, visitor comments, um, and we will use the, the lights, so you get three minutes to speak. I have always said, you know, there's, uh, we appreciate everybody coming out, um, to speak. But we have a floor that opens underneath where you stand right there, and, um, if you go over your three minutes and you slide out, and you'll pay respects to the Veterans Memorial that we have right out there by the street, so. Just be prepared. Okay, so first, Nico. Say your last name for me, Nico. Come on, you come right up here and state, state your name and your address for the record.
Nico Menza at thirty-one oh eight Winston Drive in Castlewood.
Perfect.
All right, um, can I start? So I, earlier this weekend, I, my family and I were walking our dog by the trail that crosses Castlewood Boulevard. And there were cars parked on either side of the pathway crossing. And as my family and I started to cross the street, a car whizzed by at about thirty or so odd miles an hour. Uh, and so I'm just here to request that some sort of flexible barrier be able to be put up, um, to provide what's called daylighting neat around that pedestrian crossing to increase the field of visibility for both vehicles incoming towards the pedestrian crossing and for pedestrians who are coming to that crossing. So just removing a, a space, blocking parking, uh, car parking right next to that crosswalk.
Perfect.
That's all.
Well, I appreciate you coming out, and we will make sure that we have that looked into. All right, thank you. Okay, and then, uh, Mr. Wayne Parker, you will come and just state your name and address for the record.
I'm Wayne Parker, and this is my lovely bride, and we live at three forty-two Doubletree Drive. Uh, I just want to pass on my kudos to all of you, okay, for our first responders. Uh, myself and our first responders, especially the paramedics and the E M Ts have become on a first-name basis here in the last few months. So I just want to pass on the outstanding performance that they all provide. Okay, they are very, very intelligent, very surface-oriented, and are very professional. So I just want to pass on a very well, very well-done, bravo Zulu.
We appreciate that a lot, we really do. And I know.
Thank you.
Police chief and the fire chief are here, and they, uh, they appreciate hearing that as well. Thank you for coming out. Okay, no other visitor comments for just visitor comments? So everything else is for an item on the agenda? Okay, so we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. All the items on the consent agenda are considered for approval by single motion and vote without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from this agenda, so it may be considered separately and/or adding any item from the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda items. Um, council, does anyone want to move anything off of consent or on to consent? Uh, Mr. Fiorenza.
I'd like to move item, uh, nineteen from cons, from action to consent.
Okay, council, does anybody have, anybody opposed to that? Okay, and I'll move that up when I read it. Okay, number ten, consider approval of minutes. The regular city council meeting held on July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Receive investment, investment reports for quarter ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Receive budget reports for period ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Consider resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-one thirty, authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute a professional service agreement with Dunaway Associates LLC relating to the Pilot Knoll Boat Ramp Area Improvement Project. Number nineteen moved up. Consider resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-one thirty-one ratifying the emergency declaration by the city manager, authorizing work to be performed by Sweeper King, Family Tree, Keen Tree, and Tree Shepherds for the removal of storm debris, authorizing additional agreements and change orders relating to the storm debris removal. Council, does, um, Mr. Feaster?
Uh, yes, I'd like to make the motion that we approve items ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and the addition of nineteen as read.
Okay, council.
I second.
Okay, I have a count, uh, and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign? Okay, it carries seven oh. Uh, number fourteen, we did not meet in closed session, so we are going to move to number fifteen, conduct the public hearing and consider ordinance twenty twenty-four dash thirteen thirteen. Uh. Oh, did? I'm sorry. Thirteen thirteen. Amending the city's comprehensive zoning ordinance relating to the development and use of three point one nine six plus minus acres located in the F Hyatt survey, abstract number five five nine, commonly known as one oh two Barnett Boulevard, by changing the zoning from S F forty, single-family residential, to a planned development district for patio home use. This is the first of two reads. Mr. Kristen.
Thank you, Mayor, council. The city has received an application from Mr. Dusty Broadway, D J B Development, requesting to change the current zoning on a three point nine six plus minus acre tract located at one oh two Barnett Boulevard, which is presently zoned as S F forty. By enacting a planned development district for patio homes consisting of twenty-five lots, the development would be called Magnolia Village. However, before we move forward, we did receive a written request, um, from Mr. Broadway's consultant, uh, requesting a continuance on tonight's public hearing and zoning efforts to the September tenth meeting.
Okay. So, um, Kevin, counsel, Kevin, counsel. We, um, so we have, uh, an, an ask for a continuance, so we need to vote on that.
Well, yes, uh, Madam Mayor, the decision, you know, the council can decide whether or not to proceed and, and go along with the developer's request to continue this item to the September net tenth meeting. That would be the first, uh, if you don't conduct the public hearing this evening, uh, we would need to re-notice the public hearing, which means the September tenth meeting could not occur. I, that would be the earliest we could have the next consideration of this item if it does get continued.
Okay, all right, council. Do I have a motion for continuance?
I have a question.
Do we have, can we ask questions first before we have a motion?
You asking questions of me?
Ask a question, okay, yes.
Yeah, absolutely.
If we conduct the public hearing today as scheduled, do we need to redo the public hearing when it comes back before council?
Well, it depends on what you do with the public hearing. If you, uh, if you open the public hearing and go ahead and conduct the public hearing and then continue the public hearing before conducting the public hearing, you could, you would have to continue that and could continue to the next meeting. I'm a, Lori, I'm a little loud. With that, I'm feeding back. Which is kind of a, not that I'm not loud all the way, always, anyway. But the, um, uh, in any case, we would re-notify, uh, in any ca, you know, well, we wouldn't necessarily re-notify if we continued it to the next meeting. So you could have the whole presentation tonight, conduct the public hearing, not take any action, and continue the public hearing to the next meeting if you wish.
Either way, the public meeting is gonna happen next time when it comes back.
Well, it depends, I mean, I mean. Well, it depends, I mean, I mean, you could conduct the whole case tonight if you wanted to and go ahead and have the, you know, not continue it. It's up to the, up to the council. But the developer's requested, I think he has requested additional time to work with the neighbors, per his email. And I don't know if he's ready to actually want to proceed tonight or not with the public hearing and presentation, given that.
Sorry, you have a stack of papers there of public speakers wishing to speak.
Which would be held to the next meeting, yeah.
Okay, so they don't necessarily have to refill all those out?
No.
Okay. Save, save somebody some time of writing, so.
Right. So these would, we would carry these to the next meeting, whatever, September the 10th is what the date was.
If the council wished to do so, yes, you could. I mean, I assume you would.
Okay.
I have a question. How does this affect the supermajority requirement?
The protest that would have been filed as of today would still apply at that meeting, but it does extend the deadlines for filing additional protest as well. So the deadline would follow the meeting date.
Okay, so it's still the, the supermajority threshold regardless?
It would be unless somebody during the intervening time withdrew their protest and dropped back below the 20% between now and the next meeting.
Anybody else have any questions for Kevin before? So we have a request on a continuance. So we need a motion and a second for the continuance.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we move the public hearing and the presentation to the September 10th or 11th?
10th.
10th.
September 10th as requested by the developer.
Okay, counsel, we have a motion. Mr. Feaster?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion, counsel? Does anybody have? Okay, so then, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. It carries 7-0, so, hey, so everybody heard that.
And just for clarification for the public, we will, you know, the city will be, because we're going two meetings and because we didn't conduct the public hearing tonight, there will be another public notice, you know, requirement for, for the public hearing on September 10th.
Okay, so that'll get posted in the paper, and those notices will go out?
Yes.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. Mr. Kristin? Okay. I think that was a first for me. So, okay.
A lot of continuance there.
A continuance, continuance. Consider, we're going to go to 16, Consider Resolution 2024-3132, approving a negotiated settlement between the Atmos City Steering Committee and the Atmos Energy Corps amid Tech Division regarding the company's 2024 rate review mechanism filing. Mr. Herman.
Mayor, excuse me, my voice is cooperating tonight. Mayor, counsel, the Atmos has submitted a rate increase, and this has become an annual event, and we have established a rate review mechanism with 181 other cities in the North Texas area that basically address this together. And so they submit the increase, we, the consortium hires a consultant to review that. And so basically, this is the culmination of that, where Atmos requested assistable income revenue increase of 196.8 million. The consultants instead thought that should rather be 149.6 million, and so in further discussion and negotiation, they reached a settlement of 164.7 million. So this is opposed to where the, in law, they had the option of a GRIP, a Gas Reliability Infrastructure Program, where it was kind of an automatic thing, but Atmos agreed to participate in this other alternate. And so over time, that we've mitigated a lot of the increase and basically validated what was legitimate or not. And so this is just this year's installment of that. So with the negotiated settlement of 164 million, it would be, have an effect of $5.52 for average residential user, and for commercial would be $13.39 for the average commercial user for that. So that's before you tonight for your approval and ratification, and I'll entertain any questions.
So if we don't approve that, do we not have to pay more?
If you don't want cash?
I guess that's true. I guess that's true.
I have a fireplace.
Okay, well, counsel, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we consider an approved resolution, 2024-3132, negotiated settlement between Atmos City Steering Committee and Atmos Energy.
Counsel, do you have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Nelson, seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, so it passes 7-0. And then we're going to do Consider Ordinance 2024-1314, adopting amendments to the fiscal year 2023, 2024. This is the budget, and it's the first of two reads.
As we approve our budget each year, life happens over the ensuing year, and things change, and situations unexpected occur. And so we come to counsel for authorization for reappropriation between, and what our level of accountabilities that are, is at the category level, so personnel, services, supplies, and capital for each department. They have a budget for that. We actually have line items within each, but there's discretion to live within their budget for that category within each department. But if there are need for reallocation, that's the purpose of a budget amendment for that reallocation. So as we went through our budget process for this year, you know, I showed you projections for what we thought would be our expenditures for the year. And so the amendments are basically codification of that to adjust our current budget to accommodate. So in total, our expenditures are just under half a million dollars under our budget, so, and then our revenues are actually 300,000 above. So we're in really good shape, but again, within each category, there's some tweaking, I guess, to go with that. So just to give you a quick summary of personnel, there's $69,000 that's reallocated. Other than personnel, 524,000 for just a few major things. In IT, additional 50,000 is for additional appropriation for storage services and as well as firewall. We have some unexpected repairs and maintenance and equipment we needed to get for that. Parks had a mower that was needed to address for right-of-way mowing for the current mower. We had some safety issues with that. 125,000 for Streets' budget for a dump truck that was actually ordered two years ago, and it took two years for us to actually receive that with, you know, the supply chain issues. And so it was a budget for it there. Since we're receiving it now, we're going to re-improprate that out of fund balance. And additional $140,000 for Streets related to the emergency storm debris cleanup for that. So those are the, kind of the major things with the budget. There's a few other smaller things, but again, that mirrors the projections that were provided in our budget discussion, and I'll reiterate the fact that we're still considerably under our budget target in total.
Okay, counsel, does anybody have any questions? And I will entertain a motion, Mr. Fiorenza.
I do have one question. Caught my attention when you were talking about the dump truck. You said it was appropriated two years ago and being realized in this next budget. The money was already there, it's just pushed forward.
Correct. Things are not expended during the year, roll into fund balance. And so since it was in a subsequent year, we didn't have it addressed specifically for this year's budget, so we're re-appropriating that out of fund balance, and it's money that we already had, we just hadn't spent it.
It was already appropriated for, but was put back in.
Right.
Fund balance to sit until it came to be.
Right.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Agenda Item 17, Ordinance Number 2024-1314, authorizing amendments to fiscal year 2023, 2024 budget.
Okay, we have a motion, counsel. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Mr. Cox, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. It carries 7-0. Thank you. Number 18, consider the ad valorem tax rate for the year 2024 and set a public hearing date on the proposed fiscal year 2024-2025 budget and proposed tax rate. Mr. Herman.
Two major tasks we have for each summer is to approve a tax rate and a new budget. So this is part of that process where you establish a tax rate that you're considering, and this, what this motion is going to be for, the tax rate we, we propose to consider. And then we set a public hearing and post that and publish it and at a later date and gives people an opportunity to comment on that. So this year's rate that we're proposing is actually tied to our voter-approved rate. And even though it's a little bit of a tax decrease, rate decrease from last year, it still exceeds the no-new-revenue tax rate. So according to, you know, the truth in taxation laws, that anything above that effective rate is considered a tax increase, and so therefore, we publish with that verbiage that you're considering that. But it's when, it's within the threshold of your discretion that wouldn't require a public vote. So the tax rate of .500273 is what is being proposed, again, just a very slight decrease from our current tax rate. And it would be concurrent with this motion to consider that. The ultimate tax rate could actually be less than that, it just would not be able to exceed that. And so you will also establish a public hearing date. I would propose September 10th. That would be concurrent with our first read of the budget along, and then have the public hearing for public comment for the tax rate as well as the budget at that time. And there is specific language that we have to make the motion with, and so that's kind of that in a nutshell. Hopefully, my explanation in early work session helps understand where that tax rate came from.
So it was clear as much.
If it didn't, you can ask me again.
So.
I don't want to ask you again, but I want to ask you, for the benefit of the, of the audience, though, a brief explanation of why. I mean, you did in a sense, the effective rate right now is .501.
Actually, the effective rate is like .47.
Right, but with the.
Or the effective rate, I should say, the no-new-revenue rate.
No-new-revenue rate, but we're charging .501 currently, and the calculations that the state allows us caps us at three and a half based on revenue projections, et cetera, which allows us to go to .5002, no more, no more than.
Right.
Correct?
So in essence, if we take the tax rates divided into two components, you know, we basically a rate that we use divided by our, you know, our total valuation to satisfy our debt obligations. And the remainder of that is for maintenance and operations. So that component of the rate for last year, the dollars that we, the tax levy, divided by the this year's adjusted new tax levy, is basically your MNO, no-new-revenue rate. And so the voter-approved rate is three and a half percent over that. So that's where, that's the maximum the state allows for counsel to consider an increased revenue from a tax rate.
From the approved, voter-approved rate.
Right.
Which allows us to go to the .5002.
Right.
Which is a decrease from what we're currently charging.
That's correct.
But it's what's allowed by state calculations.
Yes, sir.
And estimates. Okay, that makes sense. Got it?
Any other questions, counsel? Okay, I'll entertain a motion, and he's got, it's specific verbiage.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Everybody's getting involved in it.
I would like to make a motion that we approve.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 18, that a .500273 per $100 valuation be proposed for adoption as the city's ad valorem tax rate for the 2024 tax year, and set September 10th, 2024, as a date for holding the public hearing to receive public comment on said tax rate and the 2024, 2025 fiscal year budget.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion, counsel. Do I have a second? Mr. Nelson, seconds. No further discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. It carries 7-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so we moved 19 to consent. We went to late work sessions, status reports on current projects, and discussion on future agenda items. Counsel, does anyone have anything that they, yes.
Go ahead.
Rhonda first.
No, he can go first.
Okay, Robert first. Robert?
This is for, would have been for Mr. Stevens, but it might be for the Fire Chief if he's here. And I apologize, I don't know, but what is the status of the joint training facility for the Fire Department? I saw one of the amendment that we just approved concerns that facility, so just curious on the status.
Oh, or is it construction?
Yes, if it's on time or we're expecting.
There's a Fire Chief, maybe?
So, no more, it is on contract to come in January.
Come up.
And so expected January pending any other issues that come across, but it shouldn't be, but we should see that functional hopefully in January.
Okay, so what we just approved, was that our prorated share of the actual cost?
Yes, sir. It was an addendum to the original. We had already paid our prorated share. They ran in some other expenses, and so this was an addendum to that, but we should be all set at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody, oh, Councilman Hurst?
Future council item. So the city of Highland Village has a long history of citizen volunteerism. Citizen advisory boards and commissions offer a way for the community members to volunteer for city, for the city and provide insight on topics based on their personal and professional experiences. The city can tap into a network of citizen volunteers to advise and support the city's staff and council. City committees are a perfect way to focus on community needs, serve fellow citizens, and stay informed on key issues. I'm requesting a city council workshop discussing harnessing the talent and time of citizens by creating committees. With a lean and efficient staff, limited resources, and approaching build-out, these committees will assist the staff and city council with policy decisions and reduce the need to spend additional taxpayer money on outside consultants. Potential committees could include Community Engagement Advisory Board, Comprehensive Plan Implementation Committee, City Charter Review Committee, Ordinance Review Committee, Trail Steering Committee, Historical Committee, and Keep Highland Village Beautiful. Our vision, our village, our vision isn't just a motto, it is a fabric of Highland Village. When we all work together, we can maintain the wonderfulness that makes Highland Village such a unique place and a reason we love to call home.
Okay, all right, thank you. We'll put that on for.
I'll email you the text, Angie.
Wow, that was really nice. Very professional. Thank you. Okay, so anybody else have anything? Well, I just would like to reiterate what Councilman Hurst had said in the beginning. School did start. Please, 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 watch out for the children while you're, when you're driving through. Pay attention to speed zones, kids' crosswalks, and the whole nine yards. Please be careful, all right? And I think that's all. Then if we don't have anything else, we are adjourned at 8:04.